Good evening, everyone. My name is Ted Ischeide. Thank you for attending this Matsui Borough Fish and Wildlife Commission's special meeting with our special guest, Alaska Department of Fish and Game, and the subject is Fisheries 2022 Season Summary. For a couple of tips for this meeting, I'll be turning it over to Chair Mike Wood here momentarily. We have many commissioners and guests online. I just want everyone to know that we are recording this meeting, so keep that in mind. The other thing is there will be an opportunity for our public comment, and we would ask that people that want to make comment when that time is appropriate to come up to the podium with the mic. There is a on/off button and turn, make sure it's got a green light, and we want to make sure we hear you for your important comments. I do have a colleague down on the lower floor here. Maya, can you raise your hand? So she's there to assist you with anything. The other thing is for people present here, over here on this table with the little blue card in somebody's water, there is a sign-in sheet. We would ask that you sign in. We have an agenda, a fairly thick meeting packet that we may refer to during the meeting, and then on the far right is a supplemental handout that we just got, well, late yesterday, so we call that a handout. For people online, you can access these documents at the Matsui Borough Fish and Wildlife Commission website, and essentially if you Google MSB Fish and Wildlife Commission, usually that will bring you to it, and that has all those materials there as well. If you are online, the best practice is to stay muted until you want to speak, and if you're using the Teams app, there's a mute button. We try to make sure you stay muted so we don't get interference. The other thing is if you're using a landline or cellphone connection, generally on landline, star six to mute and unmute, and then you have usually a separate mute button on your cellphone. And I think the last thing I'd like to say is, again, thank you for coming. We have bathrooms out in the lobby area, and please sign in if you haven't before you leave. So, Mr. Chair, I would, at this time, like to turn it over to you.
Okay, thanks, Ted. It is 5:04, and I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Fish and Wildlife Commission. We'll start with the roll call. So Andy Couch, you there?
Here.
Andy, I can see from your nose on up. You might want to tip your screen a little, unless that's on purpose. It's a good shot. There you go, bud. Good. Okay, Howard Dilo. Howard, you're silent.
Oh, can't you hear me?
I do now. Good job. Okay, Larry Ingle.
Here.
Tim Hale.
Here.
Hey, Tim. Pete Provasco.
Here.
Jesse Sumner. Jesse, you out there? Okay, Kendra. Sam Zow.
Here.
Excellent. Jim Sykes, you out there? Okay, Ted, do we have a quorum?
Yes, sir, we do, and...
Yes, sir, we do, and also Jim Sykes had pre-notified me he would not be able to make it.
Cool. So we'll start with just a land acknowledgement, that we acknowledge that we are meeting on traditional lands of the Anana and the Naina people, and we are grateful for their stewardship of the land, fish, and wildlife through Time Memorial. Approval of the agenda. Can we have a motion due in? Thanks, Larry. Second?
Second.
Thanks, Pete. Right on. Are there any objections to the motion?
Mike, this is Andy Couch.
Go ahead, Andy.
So Ted explained how people might participate in the building there. Is there an option where people can raise their hand and maybe participate if they have a question or concern online as well?
Absolutely, and we'll get to that here in a second. Yeah, go ahead, Ted.
Yeah, thank you, Andy, for bringing that up. You can raise your hand, but I'm taking minutes, and unless somebody notices it, you may not be noticed. So one way to get attention is if you want to say something, the chair is generally pretty flexible with discretion. The best thing is sometimes to just unmute and say, "Mr. Chair, can I have the floor?" And if he recognizes you, that's oftentimes the best way. Otherwise, you have your hand up, and I don't see it because I'm taking notes. Maya, are you on the Teams thing at all? Yeah, if you don't mind. So we have a second pair of eyes. So for online world, the best thing is to just verbally say something, unmute and verbally say something. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance, so let's...
We didn't approve it yet.
All right. Is there any objections to approve any object to the agenda? Hearing no objections, agenda passes unanimously, and everyone is allowed to speak. Just interrupt me, as usual. Okay, Pledge of Allegiance. Kendra?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, eternal, just as for all.
Okay, all right. Now, introductions. We'll start with, it says, Fish and Wildlife Commission Opening Statements. I'll just say welcome to everybody in this room and online, hopefully, and thanks for attending on this crazy snowy day. It's hard to get here for everyone. And we're trying to do our end-of-season wrap-up, where we talk to the sport fish, Alaska Department of Fish and Game, sport fishing, and com fishing, and all of that is to continue to check in with the borough to see how things went, so to hear from the department, and for the department to also hear from us and the people that live in the Matsui. That's kind of the point of this. So if you have questions, please do interrupt me. That being said, we wrote up about seven questions for the department, and we were given, we gave the questions to the department to answer ahead of time, so even though it'll sound somewhat redundant, we will go back through each one. And I might add, the fact that there's only seven might mean that we'll actually get through them all this time. We don't have 25 like past years, so feel free to chime in. Anyhow, that usually leads to some good discussion. So let me see, that being said, that's our little part. Department of Fish and Game, Sport, and Com will have a chance to talk, and it, further in the down, it says, "Audience Participation." Do we want to just wait, Ted, or do you want to introduce the audience right now?
Mr. Chair, I'd recommend just following the order, the agenda, since it was approved, so it would be appropriate for Fish and Game to give a statement, and then the audience.
Cool. Well, let's start with, is Colton here? Sorry?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm here.
Online. All right. You, are you doing the commercial fishing statement?
Correct.
Yeah, just an opening statement is all. So you want to introduce yourself, and thank you for being here.
Yeah, see if I can make this work. Yep, I'm Colton Luka. I'm the new Commercial Fisheries Management Biologist for Upper Cook Inlet. So I've been on job now for a couple of weeks, but thank you for having me for this meeting, and did my best to answer your questions as they come up here.
Thanks, Colton. Sam's?
Yeah, hi. It's kind of neat to see Colton on TV like that, but Sam Ivy, I'm the Area Sport Fish Management Biologist stationed out here in Palmer. So, thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Sam. Ivy?
And I'm Samantha Ozon, the Assistant Area Management Biologist out here in Palmer for Sport Fish.
Thanks, Samantha. Hey, Matt, we see you as well. Do you want to introduce yourself?
I did indeed. I have no opening statement, but it's good to see familiar faces there, and my name is Matt Miller. I'm with the Division of Sport Fish, and I work with the Cook Inlet Sport Fisheries, so good to, good to see everybody online, and thanks for inviting us.
Good to see you, Matt. Thanks for making it. Let's see, ADFNG. So we'll come around to that, but audience introduction and participation, please, just so we know who's in the room or who's online listening, we'll start with people in the room. Just please introduce yourself, and if you have something you'd like to say, feel free to do it and keep it under three minutes. Go ahead. Could you please speak? Yeah, you want to come up to the, that way we can hear you better, and it's recorded, so just push it.
Okay. Well, we moved here in May of 91, and I loved fishing, and now I love it even more, and I know a lot of the folks here and online. When we first moved here, our first June, we took a trip down the Little Sioux, six of us in canoes, and everybody hooked a king, and five of us caught one. I remember the days when the silvers were five a person, and I remember catching my five. I continue fishing, and I take a lot of people fishing as a friend and not with any kind of charge, and so it's a hobby. A lot, some of you here get my pictures, and it's something I do a lot. Last year, we caught about 60 silvers on the Little Sioux, and I also fish other streams and down on the Kenai, and I ice fish and things like that. So all I can say, and I would just like to let you know that the fisheries here are a treasure. I understand the difficulty of managing commercial and sports fisheries. Anything this group can do to keep our fisheries as healthy as possible, I am all in favor of and would do what I can to help, and that's what I wanted to say.
Hey, thank you so much. Okay, go ahead.
Hey, Mike, this is Andy. Just to interrupt, you might have them give their name.
My name is Robert Howard. My name is Robert Howard, and I'm an Alaskan resident since 1961, lived here in the valley since the 70s. I have served on the Matsui Borough Trails Committee. I was one of the founding members of the Matsui Trails Council. I was a chair of Kanik River Watershed Group. I have done US Fish and Wildlife surveys in the Kanik, and I've been monitoring, monitoring in-river fish habitat issues for over 35 years. And I, my primary concern that I would like to learn more about and to see what we can do more about is effective management of sensitive habitats. I've been very discouraged with all of the increased damages I have seen in those years that I have heavily documented. That's probably enough for now.
Thank you, Robert. Appreciate you showing up tonight. Out in the audience? No? Okay, we'll chime in if you'd like to. Sorry about being up here. I did ask everybody, the borough, to provide high chairs for everybody out there, so to get you all on the same level as us, but they couldn't accommodate. But we've got an awesome tech guy here tonight helping us out, so thanks.
My name is Gabe Kitter. I'm a lifelong Wasilla resident. Thank you, Borough, for putting us on, and thank you, Fish and Game, and the other folks putting this on. I'm just a member of the public and avid fisherman and hunter, interested in hearing what has to be said tonight. Thank you.
Coming, Gabe. Yeah. Out in the back? Awesome. Sorry we didn't catch you on the first go-around there, Forrest. I did recognize you. I just didn't put two and two together. I'm sorry, buddy. It's the flannel. All right. Great, thanks for being here.
Hey, Mike. Mike, this is Andy again.
Okay.
We cannot hear that. Anybody online can't hear anything.
Okay, Andy, I'm sorry. They didn't walk up to the, to the intercom, but that was Linda Lindsay? Let Linda? Leila Leslie, sorry. I didn't hear very well either, Andy, so. And next? Out in the audience, why don't you yell, and I'll interpret for Andy? If you, only if you really feel like it.
Yeah, Mark. I also work for Matsui Borough, but I'm here as a citizen as well.
All right.
Love fishing in Alaska. I actually grew up in Washington State, and I can't tell you how many hours I spent trying to catch a salmon in future sound, and I moved to Alaska. It's a totally different situation up here, so I hope we can keep it that way, and anything you guys can do to make that happen is fantastic, and I'm here to support it.
Thank you. Dan? Yeah. Did you catch a Dan, Dan Mark, I believe?
Mark.
Monarch, Andy. Okay, that's, anybody online? See Neil?
Hello, this is Neil Dewey. I'm just here as a member of the public tonight. Thanks for listening up.
Thanks, Neil. Anyone else online?
Yeah, good afternoon. I'm Jerry Sumter. I am representing Senator Murkowski in the valley and avid fisherwoman, subsistence, and personal use. Good evening, everyone.
Thanks for being here tonight.
Welcome.
Just jump in. Go ahead.
Yeah, there's a, I don't know who it is. It's initial DS has a hand up online.
Thanks, Howard. Dan, are you there? Online? If you are, we're not hearing you.
Might need to ask him to unmute.
Dan, are you trying to talk to us? Okay, anyone else online want to jump in?
Yeah, hey, Mike, this is Trevor Rollman. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I do. Hear you well. Thanks for joining us, buddy.
Yep, just a Northern District Setneter, here to just sit in and hear what's going on, what happened last year, and be up to date on the issues so we can make some good decisions moving forward. Thanks for hosting.
Thank you. Next?
Hey, Mike, this is Eric.
This is Steve Braun of the Northern District Setneter, just listening and learning.
Thanks for being there again, Steve. Next?
Hey, Mike, this is Eric Booton with Trot Unlimited. Can you hear me?
Hi, Eric. Yep.
Hi, I just wanted to thank you all for hosting this, and just want to note that we're extremely fortunate to have healthy and intact river systems throughout much of the borough area, and while we also have a lot of pressure and concern from urbanization, climate change, invasive species, and more, fortunately, there's a lot we can do together to ensure that the Matsui can maintain its strong and wild fisheries alongside growing communities and economies, and just want to express my appreciation to the Fish and Wildlife Commission for your work and leadership, and thank you, Fish and Game, for being here this evening.
Thanks, Eric. Next? Jump in. Stumble over each other.
Hi. Jessica and I were going to go at the same time. Well, I'm Mark Lammer. I'm Land Environment Director with Native Village of Kootenai, and we do a lot of things with salmon cultural projects, research, to advise management, and I also am the representative for the tribe on the Cook Inlet Tribal Fisheries Group with Jessica. Let's take it away, Jessica.
Thanks, Mark. Jessica, you next.
Okay, Jessica Winstaffer with Chickilu, Native Village, not representing them tonight, but taking notes to report back, and our, our focus area is mostly the Matneeska watershed of Upper Cook Inlet, but we definitely care about the fish in all of Upper Cook Inlet and the ecosystems that connect them all. Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Jessica.
For the meeting tonight.
Online, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Hey, my name's PM Hoff, nearly a lifelong resident. I appreciate the time, and I'm looking forward to listening in to the conversation and the future of our salmon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How we doing? Anyone else online? Going once?
Hello, I'm Paul Wurk. I'm just a member of the public tuning in.
Hi, Paul. Thanks for being here again. Next?
Hey there. I'm Laura Pevin with Chickilu Native Village. I'm their new Fisheries Biologist, and I'm just here to learn and hear from Fish and Game. Thank you very much.
Thanks for joining us tonight. Next?
This is Dan Suprak. I'm on the phone now.
I hear you.
Can you? Okay, I'm with Alaska Shnick Charters, and hoping that I can ask a question a little later on about our king salmon season, possibly whether or not we're going to have one, if there's any kind of projections.
Okay, well, thank you. Don't hesitate to interrupt when the time is right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else out there?
Mike, this is Andy.
Go ahead, Andy.
I see a guy, I see a Caleb Buist that he keeps flashing on and off. I think he's attempting to talk. He may need to unmute or something. I've just tried to help out, get him on somehow. I don't know.
Caleb, it appears you got a hands up, and we don't hear you. If you've got a question, please ask it or remove your hand.
Mr. Chair, Caleb is our technology person over by the camera.
Okay.
And just as a reminder, the camera that you see of the, the high chairs up here is over by Caleb, so Caleb is one of our Matsui Borough staff.
Okay, thanks, Caleb. Keep us in line here, bro. Let's move on. So ADFNG opening statements, we did that, introduced the audience. Anyhow, we traditionally, let me see, moving on from there, presentations, let's get down to it. So I'm going to turn this over to Ted, and Ted, let's start the presentations.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. This will be brief. Again, Ted Ischeide, I staff the Matsui Borough Fish and Wildlife Commission. Just a couple of things I wanted to say. I always give a brief staff report, and I just want to encourage people that are new to these types of meetings, that the Matsui Borough Fish and Wildlife Commission very much appreciates public input, and they serve the citizens of the Matsui Borough, their advisory to the Assembly, and we meet the third Thursday of every month, taking the summer months off to fish. So we do a lot with fisheries, but we also work quite a bit with wildlife, and we're trying to work with those issues more. So we do have a pretty robust webpage. You will see my contact information on there. Just Google MSB Fish and Wildlife Commission, and I'm happy to forward anything that you want the commission to see to them, and they do like to hear about concerns and perspectives from the public. So please consider coming to our next meeting, and that's on the agenda. It's December 15th, that's next Thursday, but generally the third Thursday of every month, typically 4:00 PM, but we always have a remote participation option, and we meet in a lower level, everyone on the same level meeting room, so it's a little more intimate. In terms of tonight's agenda, I just want to mention one thing. So Fish and Game is going to be asked to do a commercial fishing season summary and then a sport fish season summary, and we've asked them to keep each one of those to five minutes, because the dialogue is the most useful part. So I just want you to realize that in your packet, there is a couple of things from commercial fishing. We have the Lower Cook Inlet and then Kodiak Commercial Fishing Season Summary, and I have a table of contents there, so it's very easy to find. The real action, the Upper Cook Inlet, is on the far right supplement, and I just made that. I just got that last night. They just approved it at Fish and Game, so that's, that's there, and then Sport Fish is also has their summary there. So it's just a brief five-minute highlight. Then the real action will come in the dialogue that the chair will lead, and I think, Mr. Chair, that's all I really have, except to say that on our agenda next week, we are going to have something about the Matsui Borough's proposed changes to development setbacks, and that was supposed to be dealt with tomorrow, to be referred to the Planning Commission possibly. That's been delayed till the 20th of this month, so you will have a chance to make comment to the Assembly on whether they should refer that to the Plan Commission for action. So just want to mention that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Right on, Ted. Thank you. Yeah, so like Ted said, end-of-season summary, and this one's directly looking at fish, both commercial and the sport fishing departments. I guess it, we really could integrate that, it's some wildlife, and it would take another meeting altogether, and then the habitat issues that we deal with here more often than we seem to deal with fish and wildlife. So, but nonetheless, we have tonight with us the, the Colton from the Commercial Fisheries, and if, if you'd like to, you could start off by just giving us a quick summary of this, this year's commercial fishing season, and, and then we'll jump into Sam, Sam, Sam Ozland and Sam Ivy, so.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to ask people online, like Colton, to really speak up, because we are having a hard time hearing some of the comments from our online guests, so speak like a teacher, close to the mic, and we will be able to hear you. Thank you. speak like a teacher, close to the mic, and we will be able to hear you, thank you.
Colton, please.
Okay, is that my cue to go? Okay, everybody hear me alright before I get going here?
Hear you loud and clear.
Excellent, thank you.
And see.
Okay. So, I'm just gonna run through the highlights here of the season summary which we issued yesterday. And they mentioned it's available there in the room, for those who want to follow along, I'll try to give you some page numbers as we go, so. First off, the total run for Cook Inlet was 5.2 million fish, which is just a shade greater than the preseason forecast of 4.9. And the overall harvest of 1.4 million was 44% less than our 10-year. So just on the biggest scale. Forecast was pretty much on, but harvest overall was down. For our escapement goals, for the six sockeye salmon escapement goals that we had, three were within their escapement goal ranges, those were Judd, Larson and Packers. And then two of them exceeded with Cassiloff and Fish Creek. Kenai at this point, we don't know. Still need to account for sport fish harvest upstream of the sonar before we can give that one a judgment. But at this point, if we were to look at a long-term average, it looks like we're going to be near the upper end of that goal, around 1.3 million. Then if we jump over to page four, for the people that are following along, we'll look at our Drift Gillnut Harvest and I've kind of made some assumptions about what this group wants to hear, so we'll hit this and you guys feel free to ask me questions later. For Drift Gillnut Sockeye Harvest, they got up to about 893,000 sockeye, which is 22% less than the 10-year. And that's going to be kind of a theme through this, is that harvest was down with just a couple of exceptions. For the Northern District Sockeye, harvest was 51,800, this is about 6% greater than the 10-year average. That fishery did have its net restrictions that took place in the later half of the summer for Susitna River Sockeye. For Koho and the Drift Fishery, harvest was 51,000, which is about 52% less than the 10-year average, which is around 107,000. For the Northern District, Set Gillnut Fishery harvest was 36,000, which is 16% less than the 10-year average. So for Koho, you're looking at below average. And then for Chinook, for the Northern District, harvest was, well, in the directed Chinook Fishery, harvest was 1,300. And overall 1,400 for the rest of the summer, which both of those are less than the 10-year average. Of note, we also did have a reduction in participation, particularly in the Drift Fishery. With about a 40% reduction in participation there, so that could help with some of the why for reduced harvest. I suppose that's about the quick version of that, so if we want to do questions now or later, whatever you guys want.
No, that was, that was great, thank you, appreciate it. Sam?
Yeah, thanks Mike. Alright, well, we'll get started with talking about King Salmon Fisheries, then briefly Sockeye and then Koho here. There's a lot to talk about with King Salmon, unfortunately, this year there wasn't really, we started off the season very conservatively, not anticipating that we'd have a harvest opportunity. And so we were single hook, artificial only and catch and release. And by about the first quarter of the run, we were experiencing some fairly low weir counts and by June 20th, we pretty much shut everything down sport fishery wise in the Matsu area and the Susitna Drainage. As it turns out, we have the lowest escapement on record for the Chinook Salmon on the Deska River at 5,500, we did make the Little Sioux goal by about 300 fish above the low end. So that was good, but on the Deska, we were over forecast this year by about 50% below what we thought or what we were expecting. We still have yet to run our estimates for other stocks on the Susitna, on the Talkeetna East Side. And the Yenna, but that's coming up pretty quick, we'll have that information so we can take off with looking forward to next year. So Sockeye Salmon, we have fairly limited fisheries, one of our biggest ones, the Fish Creek Personal Use Fishery. And again, this year, we experienced a rather large run and we opened that by EO on July 21 and had an 11-day dipnet fishery there. We had pretty positive dipnetting reports and if it's like anything in the past years that we've had, I think we can expect 10 to 20,000 sockeye when we come up with that estimate for this next year. So we counted through the end of July and unfortunately, we had, due to budget cuts, we had to pull that weir out early, so we didn't get a complete count. But as Colton said, we did end up counting over 58,000, so we were above the upper end of the goal when we pulled that. Larson Creek, we did not need to make any in-season changes of the sport fishery this season. And the escapement goal was made at about 17,500. So that was good, that fishery proceeded on cue. The run came in over about a seven or eight day period right at the end of July, early August. Susitna PU Fishery is another one we do that is targeting sockeye and Koho and Chum and Pink's during July, and this was the third year now of that fishery. And it's had fairly low participation, but it went off without a hitch this year, so that was good. And so Koho is a pretty popular fishery in the Matsu area. What I can say about the Koho season this year is we are just inundated with floodwaters, so it was very difficult to assess run strength. But we went in and we started getting counts at Little Sioux and by about the historical quarter point around August 5th, 6th, we were projecting to make the goal so that we could allow bait to come into that fishery per regulation. So that was nice because right after that, that weir went down and we never recovered it for the rest of the season. And it actually got pretty damaged. So we, fishing was pretty good even with the flood in effect on Little Sioux across the Susitna. Basically, I can say about Koho, it wasn't a banner year, but it was good and it was pretty steady success throughout the season from what we could tell. We were projecting, we were stair stepping up, looking okay on the Deska before we hit floodwaters there and kind of went down on the Deska. And then as we, most of us know, were cut with our budget on the Deska and have only been able to run it halfway through the Koho season, so we get the complete King Salmon count. But we can only use the Deska weir to manage the sport fishery for the early part of the season right now. So yeah, that's it and the highlights, all I can think of, Mike.
Thank you Sam.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. I guess the next thing we'll do is just, we'll be able to, we'll dive into question one through seven and then be able to talk to Colton and Sam and Sam as we go on to clarify, so. Andy, would you like to read question one or would you like me to read it for clarity, what would be easier?
Mike, I'm just scrolling to it, I don't care, I can read it or you can, it doesn't matter to me.
Okay, why don't you go ahead and do that, read it off.
Give me just a minute to scroll it up and I'll do that.
And Mr. Chair, for people that want to follow along with these questions, it's in the main packet, it's on red page 29. Red page 29, there's seven questions with Fish and Game answers, provide answers, red page 29.
Sorry to put you on the spot Andy, I can read it if it's a problem?
I, I'm there Mike.
Oh, you look good, yep, go ahead.
Okay, for the most recent three years that ADFNG has data for Upper Cook Inlet harvest, what percentage of the Northern District bound commercial sockeye harvest were taken by the Drift Fleet and by the Northern District Set Nettors? And then I'm going to just go on there a little bit, Mike, if you'll allow me. And we've got a table there. And some of that stuff I kind of wondered about, but I guess what I would like to ask the department is for one thing, we didn't have a a figure for the Northern District Sockeye, it was for Susitna and Fish Creek. But I'd like to ask the department, how do you generate these figures and would you please tell me how you use genetics and how you use the weirs to come up with these numbers, thank you.
Colton, would you like to try to take a stab at that?
Yeah, I'll only be so useful on this one. So that table was supplied by our head Research Biologist, down in Saldana, Bob DeGino. And so I just don't know the answer to all those details that Andy's looking for there. It's something that I could get back to Andy on, most likely in an email or this whole group, if that would suffice. But I don't have that one offhand though.
Thanks Colton, Andy, you want to follow up or clarify anything?
Sure, I will follow up and the reason I asked you that, Colton, is, or asked the department, that is that you know, I look at the Susitna and I see you have a number for a total run. And I'm wondering if that's done by genetics and partly by weirs? And I see you have the Fish Creek and I see you have a total run there, you know, and then you have the harvest figures for those fish. And again, the harvest out in the inlet, I think is probably by genetics, as far as coming up for numbers of a total run. I think you likely are using those weirs on that. Both of those systems, the Susitna and the Fish Creek have weirs. And then as far as coming up for a total run, you know, you didn't have anything for this year, but well, you didn't have the harvest, I don't think, I don't think you'd done the genetics on the harvest. But as far as coming up with the total run for the Susitna and for Fish Creek, I would think that if it was based on weir numbers, that might have been a bit difficult this year, with Shellatna not being operated on the Susitna. And with Fish Creek, you know, being pulled early in the season, so anyway, that those are things that the Commission has identified as legislative priorities that we want to see occur, is that we want to see our weirs in and operating. And we also want to have genetics, not just in the sockeye, but also in the Koho fishery, thank you.
Thanks Andy, we have Forrest, like to, could you come up to the mic? That way we could hear you, especially Andy could hear you better. Sorry man. Thank you.
Thanks Mike, appreciate it, yeah, I might be able to help out a little bit on this, so the the three weirs, Larson, Shellatna, Judd, they represent about 40% of Susitna sockeye escapement, that's that's our estimate, and so the estimates that you see in this table one basically are a blend of the escapement data from the three weirs and then the genetics data that we derive from the commercial fishery catch, and so that's how we're able to estimate total run size. Does that help?
Yes, yes, that helps. I guess, just.
Andy, you cut out, we're not hearing you.
Oh, sorry, I thought somebody else was talking.
We hear you now.
I thought somebody else was talking, but that helps. I guess I would ask Forrest, what do you do in a, you know, when you've lost that big weir, you know, the Shellatna weirs, you said those three weirs represent 40%? Well, of the three weirs, Shellatna is the biggest one and we've taken that out of the equation. And then, you know, what would you do this year in it, you know, as far as trying to figure everything out with Fish Creek when even the sockeye program on Fish Creek was only run partially through July, almost through the end, but not quite.
Yeah, that's just a source of greater uncertainty then, when we lose an assessment project like a weir. You know, that's data that we don't have, and so that introduces greater uncertainty into the estimate, so. Going forward, 2022 and in the future, you know, those will be data sources that we're lacking and, you know, we can we can estimate what that contribution might have been based on historical contribution, but it's just greater uncertainty, you know, we'll still be able to produce estimates like this, but we'll have less confidence in them, thanks.
Any other members, go ahead Pete.
Thanks Mike, Forrest, it's good to see you.
Hey Pete.
Forrest and I go way back. Forrest, as far as the future for that weir, Shellatna, what's in Confish's plan, is it something that is somewhere to the top of priority or is it?
Yeah, that's a good question. In general, and you'll see, there's a question on this later that we'll get to, but in general, assessment of Susitna River Drainage and Northern Cook Inlet salmon in general is a high priority for us, it's kind of a data gap given the size of the drainage and size of those runs and the importance of those runs, so. We'd like to have that project back and we actually have some other projects in mind that we'd like to begin to implement on the Greater Susitna Drainage. Thanks.
Thanks Forrest, go ahead Kendra.
Along those same lines, is it a priority to continue the genetics funding as well and is that funding, is the genetic samples, are they collected across the entire season and across different areas that are being fished?
Yeah, so we sample the commercial fishery, we're not, we don't have any genetics projects in river, but in the commercial fishery, we plan to continue that.
Right on, any other member? Okay, I'm going to take a moment to say a few things about this, mostly observations, but I just want to say that at the last Upper Cook Inlet Board of Fish meetings two years ago, changes were made to the management plan to keep in place this idea of this conservation corridor that this Commission's worked on for years now. And that was reinforced at the last meeting with, for Cook Inlet, and at the same time, the stock of yield concern was eliminated for sockeye salmon up in the Susitna River Drainage. In the last two years, the department said they were going to manage very conservatively. And as a commercial fisherman at the mouth of the Susitna River and listening to the announcements every day, both out in the lower inlet and how that affects what goes on at the mouth of the Susitna River, I really feel that the department deserves a compliment on managing the way it was written at that last Board of Fish meeting, because I think we're seeing both in my nets with that 6% increase total in the Northern District, as your stats have shown. The increase at Fish Creek and the fact that you're keeping Larson Creek open all year, I think is, rather than closing it, is a pretty good sign that the sockeye are coming back. And I would say personally, in the last two years, it hasn't been just one week of sockeye, it's, and the ones that are there have been could be damaged or have been damaged, now we're seeing them coming in, the two openers we fish in a week, they're consistently sockeye there and they've looked good. That may be because of also the 40% lack of That may be because of also the 40% lack of drift nets in the water in the lower inlet. That's not lost on me. But at the same time, I think the Susitna is seeing sockeye returning, and I personally am psyched to see that you're still managing it with an eye towards conservative timing. And I think I see that mostly when, about right around July 26, each permit is reduced to only one net per commercial fisherman instead of our normal three that were allowed. And that timing seems to always be hitting it dead on. Like, that's the bulk of the run coming through. So anyhow, hats off to the CommFish Department for that management, and it's just my personal observation. Thank you. It sounds like we got a, Trevor's got a question. Go ahead, Trevor, speak up.
Yeah, hey, Mike. I switched over to the computer. Can you hear me okay?
Loud and clear.
All right, great. I guess my question is, what can we do to get the shellatna weir back? Who do we need to lobby, put pressure on, just beg? Like, what's the problem? What can we do to get that weir back?
Who'd like to jump on that? Should we have the commissioner here? Do you want to try this, Forrest? I know it's outside of your...
Yeah, I mean, our budget goes through the legislative process, so if, you know, you'd be most effective in influencing that by speaking to your legislators, particularly finance committee members.
Trevor?
Okay, yeah, good to know.
Hey, just so you know that we've definitely been, at the commission here, have been focusing on that. It's been a topic of conversation since we started in September, and we've had, we're having more direct talks. In fact, I had a pretty, just an impromptu, one with the commissioner last week, and he was like, please provide just your priorities, simple as that. So that's as far as it's gone, so.
Well, Mike, as you know, and lots of people in the room, I'm sure, but maybe not everybody, that, you know, those wears are the only real data sources that the managers use to manage our commercial fishery. And it isn't even in season, it's post-season. They look back on the previous years and say, well, that's how the wears did in those years, so we could do this differently or whatever. So having those data points is critical.
Matsu Fish and Wildlife Commission meeting with Fish and Game while I wait to go to Barflies, and Shawna and Jamie are just getting back to her house.
Eric Booton, I think your mic needs to be muted.
Yep.
Sorry, Trevor. We didn't catch that, all of that. There was another mic on at the time.
Yeah, if that's okay to proceed, Mike?
Yes, please.
Yeah, just, my point was, is the data points that the department has to manage our fishery are very few. They were three, and now they're two. And so getting that third point back is, I would say, critical. And having some other indices would be nice. I know we had a sonar on the Susitna at one time in history, and having an accurate sonar on the Susitna would be, I don't know if that's asking for the moon, but, I mean, if we're going to ask for a weir back, I don't know. I'd like to just have some more accurate data. It's difficult to be managed. There's no in-season management of what's going on. It's all based on what happened last year and the year before and the year before on those wears.
Thank you, Trevor. Noted. Anyone else have any comments?
For the chair, I'd like to speak for a second.
Yeah, please speak up.
Hey, my name's Pete. Hey, I got a question. I don't know if you can answer it. What is a typical weir operation cost per year, per season?
Thank you. What is a typical weir operation cost per season? I think there's also, to clarify, there's commercial fishing wears and there's sport fishing wears, right? They're funded differently or separately? Sam, you want to take that on? Sam?
I mean, it depends on the duration and the complexity of the project, but I'd say, you know, $40,000 to $100,000 is kind of the range.
Yeah, did you catch that?
Yeah, yeah, I did. I guess my next question is, and I'm sure you guys are looking at other options, like, you know, crazy options, like, you know, like the keen eye option and sonars and less manpower. There's got to be another way to count fish. And it seems like in my life in Alaska, and as long as I've seen wears, I hear about blowout after blowout after blowout and lost data. There's got to be a better way to count fish than, you know, high water blowouts.
Thank you for your comments. Sam, do you want to say something?
Well, Mike, yeah, it is, Pete, it's very troublesome. Counting by wears is the number one. I mean, it really doesn't get any better than that because it eliminates making an estimate, you know, where you have some error associated with that. But it is trouble. Depending on the system, some systems, you always get a complete count, and other ones, you might only get it every other year, or, you know, maybe every five years it floods. And so we're continuously looking for how to make improvements with our wears as far as locating them and where they're located and things like that. But, yeah, it's a tricky business, but it's still kind of the number one, you know, tool that we have.
I guess my third question is, oh, I could go on for a long time, as you well know, Sam. But I guess I look at long term. In 20 years, we're going to spend $200,000 potentially on one weir, when if we bite the bullet and get on board with something that's going to work, and might cost a lot upfront, but after that 10-year period, that the project is fairly paid for, and it's low manpower, and we don't need to worry about blowouts anymore, and we're actually counting fish year after year.
Okay. Well, thanks for your comments. Everyone's paying attention. So we're, just for the sake of time, going to keep moving on to question two, okay? Please feel free to follow up with us. This is a topic we discuss every third Thursday of the month. So we're willing to listen to you then as well, too. Okay? Okay?
Yeah.
Any other questions out there from people? All right. Pete, do you want to...
Hey, Mike. Mike?
Go ahead, Andy.
Dan Suprak had his hand up.
Dan, do you have a question? Okay, we're going to, if you do, feel free to chime in anytime. Question two, do you feel like reading that one, Pete?
Sure, Mike.
Thanks.
Question two. As you know, the Upper Cook Inlet Drifters Association, commonly referred to as UCITDA, sued to reinstate federal control and management of salmon fisheries in Cook Inlet and removed the state from their management agreement with the North Pacific Fishery Management Council to handle this management. The basis for UCITDA's suit was that the state was not following the Magnuson Stevens Fisheries Act. The court ruled in UCITDA's favor and ordered the North Pacific Fishery Management Council to review and reformulate their fisheries management plan in agreement with the state about how the salmon would be managed. After more than a year, the North Pacific Fishery Management Council issued a finding that banned commercial salmon fishing in the EEZ of Cook Inlet or federal waters. UCITDA went back to court claiming this new federal regulation was discriminatory and asked for a stay in the enforcement of the regulation. The court agreed with this request. The North Pacific Fishery Management Council is currently dealing with this latest court order. When asked, what suggestions would ADMG offer to the North Pacific Fishery Management Council to resolve this issue? Could it be something as simple as banning all salmon fishing in federal waters of Cook Inlet south of Calligan Island to eliminate the discrimination of UCITDA's claims?
So I'll take that one.
Please do, Forrest.
There's a couple parts here. One, part of this is active litigation still, and so we can't comment on active litigation. As noted earlier, the North Pacific Fishery Management Council, well, actually, National Marine Fisheries Service was ordered by the court to develop a new fishery management plan for Cook Inlet. Amendment 14 was vacated by the court, Federal Circuit Court. And so the North Pacific Fishery Management Council is working to develop a new FMP for Cook Inlet salmon. They're meeting right now on that, and you all have submitted a letter to the council, so I presume you're aware of the timing. They, the council will be scheduled to begin their discussion of the salmon discussion paper that they have on Saturday morning, or Saturday afternoon. The advisory panel took it up yesterday, and so I just encourage you to stay engaged in that process. You know, at this point, it's a discussion paper, so the council will be making recommendations as to any, you know, changes that they want to see in the discussion paper, whether it should move forward to final action, whether it's ready for that, or they might signal that they have a preliminary preferred alternative, that they're kind of signaling that they might consider it final action, or they might direct the agency to make changes to that discussion paper that they have now. But I just encourage you to stay engaged in that.
Thank you. Questions on our commission? Go ahead, Pete.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Forrest. So, to answer your question, I was not aware of that the discussion paper was completed and before the council at this time. Of course, we just drafted our letter last month. So how do we get up to speed?
Yeah, that's a good question, and, you know, the council process is, you know, the size of these discussion papers, I mean, it's not something that is easily digestible. Yeah, it's, so if you're not kind of monitoring it all the time, it can get ahead of you for sure. They're not taking final action at this meeting. So this is a good time to start paying attention and to weigh in. You know, I'd suggest you listen or participate in that meeting. They're scheduled to start salmon Saturday afternoon, and it continues into Sunday. I think it's got most of the day on Sunday, so it's a big issue for the council. There were comments at the advisory panel about the amount of public engagement that there's been up to this point. Because this is on kind of an accelerated timeline dictated by the courts, there hasn't been a lot of outreach from the council. As you might recall, previously with Amendment 14, the council had a salmon committee that was tasked with developing alternatives to be considered. And they had a number of meetings over a couple of years. They did not reengage with the salmon committee for this analysis that they're currently considering. So, yeah, I mean, this is a good time to get engaged. But it is an accelerated timeline, so that's, I guess that's the best I can offer right now.
Thanks, Forrest, for the answer. May I?
Yeah.
So did the department play much of a role in the discussion paper, or was it strictly the council?
We did. You know, we have a staff that supports the commissioner's seat on the council, and, you know, we provide a lot of data that goes into the discussion paper. And then, of course, you know, the commissioner and the staff that support him are, you know, making those policy calls about what sort of alternatives. I mean, their commissioner's seat makes that recommendation on the council, and, you know, the council takes action on the alternatives that are to be analyzed. And so, you know, at this point, they're still shaping those alternatives. There's four alternatives in the discussion paper. Those could change, though, based on what the council does at this meeting. So at this point, our role has really been in, you know, reviewing the document and providing updated fishery data.
All right. Any other questions about...
Yeah, Mike, this is Howard.
Go ahead, Howard.
Yeah, just Forrest, Howard D. Lo here. This was my question, and rather long one, but I was trying to set the stage. I appreciate the department can't comment on ongoing litigation, but maybe you could give a very brief, I'll say dumbed-down summary for us civilians as to what's so complex about this issue. And, because what I've read was, of course, the first time around, the comment was the feds weren't following the Magnuson Stevens Act, and the court agreed, so they threw it back. Then the next comment, and this is all newspaper stuff, I didn't, I don't have any other source, said that basically it was considered a discriminatory action by not allowing commercial fishing, salmon fishing, out in the EEZ. To my simple approach to life, to me, the logical approach would be, well, then just ban all salmon fishing, sport, dieted sport, commercial, whatever, in that zone, and then nobody's being discriminated against. But apparently, that's not even a real viable option, because maybe it's too simple. And if it is too simple, why is this such a complex issue?
Well, this is, it's actually an incredibly complex issue, and as all of you are aware, salmon fisheries are incredibly important to the state of Alaska. In fact, it's a big reason why we're a state. So this action that the council is considering contemplates some degree of federal management of salmon fisheries in Alaska. And so that, that alone, you know, interjects or injects a level of complexity and concern from the state that, you know, we don't see in a lot of other issues. You know, the action contemplates joint state-federal management of salmon fisheries in Cook Inlet. That's incredibly complex. The federal government moves very slowly in comparison to the state in their fishery management. They don't have the equivalent of an emergency order that can be issued, you know, in a very short amount of time based on in-season data. You know, a quick fishery management action from the federal government is several days. So and, you know, the action also contemplates closing the fisheries in the EEZ. That's a big impact on people. So, yeah, I mean, those are some of the elements, Howard.
Thanks, Forrest. I realize it is a complex issue. It's just, and I, there's probably as much politics involved in this as anything else because of the federal state, different approach on some things, on how to do things. But I appreciate your comments, and thanks for addressing the issue. And I'll be quiet now.
Hey, go ahead, Pete.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Forrest, for that answer. And, you know, if you look at my second career, I can speak on federal management very well versus state management. But my question is, and you were in Dutch Harbor when we were working on the FMP for shellfish fisheries in the Bering Sea, and... And we, through that hard process, we ended up where the state's managing the shellfish fisheries. Is that some approach that the state is looking at right now for Cook Inlet?
That's one of the alternatives that's considered in the discussion paper. So that's alternative two. It's joint state-federal management. Excuse me. And that would set up a process similar to what we have for Bering Sea crab, where the state would be responsible for the day-to-day management with some degree of federal oversight over certain aspects of the fishery. So that's one of the alternatives.
All right. Hey, Howard, to follow up on your question, number three, do you want me to read that? Or are you prepared to read question three? It's kind of a follow-up to question two as well.
Mike, this is Howard. Do you want me to read it?
Yes, would you please? If you can't, I don't mind doing it, but go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I can read it. Can everybody hear me all right?
Yep, loud and clear.
Okay, question number three. The current court decision addressing the EEZ waters has instructed the North Pacific Fisheries Management Council to develop a salmon management plan for these waters. The NPFMC staff has told the court this would take at least until 2024 to develop. Our understanding is that Fish and Game will continue to manage these waters until the North Pacific Fisheries Management Council process is completed. How does the department plan to manage this fishery in 2023?
Yeah, please do, Colton. Go ahead.
So our answer supplied is fairly succinct to there. But until the federal counterpart has finished their process, we'll continue to manage these fisheries as we have, following the plans that the Board of Fish has provided through the public process. So in light of anything changing, then let's everybody can expect what we've been seeing the last few years.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions on question three and two for that matter? Go ahead, Pete.
Thanks, Colton. So does that mean the fleet can go into the EEZ for 2023?
Unless we're told otherwise, it'd be similar to this last year, where there was limited openings within the EEZ as part of Area 1 and district-wide openings.
Okay, that clarifies it, because I thought maybe the court had jumbled it up. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Colton. Any more on, any questions out there online about question three, two or three? All right. Oh, so we'll move on to question four, and?
Mike, you have someone out in the audience?
Oh, sorry, would you like to come up and say something on that? Please do. Sorry.
My name's Leila Leslie, and I'm a resident of the borough. I just want to know just what would be an advantage or disadvantage of the federal government having oversight of the fishery? Does that make sense?
Forrest, do you want to? Yeah.
Can you not say anything because of the litigation?
Well, can you use the mic, please? I'd like to keep it compared.
Sorry, Forrest.
Yeah, I mean, really, you know, a group representing commercial fishermen sued the federal government. And so they have an argument for why they did that. You know, from the state's perspective, you know, we believe state management is sustainable. And we believe our management is responsive to the needs of the public, the users, the people that own the resource. You know, we're managing these resources in the public's trust. And we don't believe that we need state oversight to do that, or federal oversight to do that. So that's, that's kind of been the perspective that we've taken at the council process is that Alaska's salmon fisheries are best managed by the state of Alaska. So that's a short answer.
Thanks, Forrest. Thanks for being here to answer all these questions, Stu. Does that, did that work okay? Does that answer your question? All right, thanks for coming up and asking it. Any other questions out there?
Yeah, Mike, this is Howard.
Go ahead, Howard.
Okay, just a real quick comment on that. One of the driving reasons to move the territory of Alaska into the state of Alaska status was to gain, I'll use the term, local management of natural resources, because the federal government was considered to be too detached from the everyday process. And obviously, one of those major pushes on management was fisheries. And it, as it worked out, the state was declared a state, not a territory, specifically to try and remove federal management and give it over to the state, who at that time at least was considered actually pretty professional and pretty competent in their ability to manage the natural resources. So I'm just throwing that out from a kind of a historical perspective. Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Howard. Okay, we're going to move on to question four here. Kendra, if you wouldn't mind reading that one.
Looking toward the future, please identify what you believe will be the most challenging issues facing the restoration and maintenance of healthy and sustainable northern Cook Inlet salmon stocks?
So a few issues come to mind. One is balancing population growth and land use with habitats important for salmon production, and along with that fish passage. Another issue is invasive species. This is one we battle all season. Northern Pike, Blackfish, and Elodia. Northern Pike have already proved to be detrimental to salmon where their habitats overlap. Elodia could really be one of the most harmful invasives as it quickly degrades salmon habitat and impedes fish passage and migration. And then also spawning and rearing environments, degradation due to climate, changing climates. This would include warmer stream temperatures negatively affecting spawning success.
Thanks, Samantha. Are there questions for Sam out there from the commission about that response? I'd say from, I'll jump in. Do you want to say, go ahead, Kendra. Go, please, you. I should talk last, always.
Well, I don't have the question formulated in my head right now. But I love that Fish and Game wants to balance population growth. That would be a new, a whole new area for you. Funding, obviously, has been a big part of this discussion. And in particular, this part with the habitat, it seems like there's funding coming down the pike through the bipartisan infrastructure bill and the Inflation Reduction Act. And I wonder if you guys are working to identify where that funding could help with some of these and bring that forward, especially to the assembly where it intersects with the Matsui Borough.
Yeah, Kendra, no, that's great. I mean, I think that we're always looking at those things. A lot of times, we're providing feedback as far as commons, as far as land use projects that are, that come before us and things like that. But we also work closely with the Matsui Fish Partnership. And since that is so habitat-centered, it really, for somebody like me and Samantha, where our primary responsibilities are with management, where we're just talking sometimes as simply as where counts and managing off-stock assessment projects. It's good that we have a partnership going on along the side that we can tap into. And we do that. And so in that way, we can be up to speed on just, you know, as simple as projects is culvert replacements and restoring fish passage and opening up more spawning area, more rearing habitat for juveniles that can pass through areas that they were blocked before. I don't know if that answers your question, but we do have a group that we can, that is completely habitat-centered that we can work closely alongside with. And that's been an asset to us, especially out of the Palmer Office.
All right. Any other questions out there on question four?
Hey, Mike, this is Andy.
Go ahead, Andy.
Just like to run something by the department real quick. At the last salmon symposium, we learned that there was a lot of opportunity for the tribes to be involved, getting some of these federal monies to do projects. So asking somebody with the department, have, has the department reached out trying to work together with tribes on, say, like Elodia or Pike or anything like that? I think you've done some work on Pike. But just, could you give people an update, please? Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Andy. Well, go ahead, Forrest. Sure, I don't have anything to answer or respond to directly for northern Cook Inlet, but we do collaborate with tribes extensively in other parts of the state on stock assessment projects, harvest reporting projects. So we'd certainly be open to that in northern Cook Inlet if those opportunities are available. But I think the area staff might have more details on what, if anything, has been going on in that regard in this area. Thanks.
Thanks, Forrest. Would you mind coming back up to ask your question? Not you, Forrest. There was a little bit of a logjam going on there.
I'll get to the question as soon as possible. I'm glad to hear the conversation about the federal monies coming in. I've presented at the Fish Habitat Symposiums before, mostly on the Kneecock. And I appreciate bringing them into the discussion, too, as well as what all you people do and the opportunity to speak. Since we're on the habitat issues, in my over 35 years of looking at local habitat, I have been very disappointed and have come to the conclusion that we don't have the tools to protect sensitive habitat in the Matsui Borough. One of the main issues that I have observed over these decades is that Fish and Game has abilities to issue habitat permits up to high water. Up to high water is a small part of an ecosystem. We have a lot of damages happening from crossing to crossing. We have, we have almost 40 years since the Moose Range Plan was introduced by example. And there has never been any of the regulations, suggestions, no enforcement. It's been unattended for 40 years. And of course, we're under a rewrite now. The Borough, in my opinion, has jumped the gun by several years in planning a trail through that wetland system. I'm concerned as well that the Jonesville Moose Range Plan in that wetlands is modeled after the Kneecock River PUA, which I had a great deal to do with. I went to Juneau and got a fiscal note for that plan. I think we're making the same mistakes. I've pointed this out in letters to people involved. The discouraging part is nobody wants to talk about that. There doesn't seem to be any way for, to connect or get through to folks that these ecosystems are more than one piece. They're more than just a high water. And if, and if you tear up the ecosystem out there, we're doing away with a keystone species when we mess with the fish habitat. Worse for the Jonesville Moose Plan is it does not have some of the advantages that even the Kneecock Plan had. There's no money, there's no enforcement. We have some of that in the Kneecock. However, in the Kneecock, things are recurring that we warned about when that KRPUA was formed. Wetlands, fish habitat, and bird habitat are being impacted again in spite of in DNR's plans and Fish and Game's approval to protect certain areas. The things that we warned were happening are going to happen, are happening again. And I have documented those a great deal. There's still trucks spinning tires at Jim Lake in a prime spawning area. My question is, is what can we do to improve this situation when we have such separation with agencies and responsible people, each having their own little piece to do with this? We have trails over here, we have water crossings here, and the two shall never meet? It doesn't work that way. So I'm very interested in having some in-depth discussions about intact ecosystems instead of, if you're concerned about wildlife, go see this guy. If you're concerned about high water, go see this guy. Makes it really hard for a citizen that is concerned about the environment and an ecosystem to get anything done whatsoever. Enforcement, another issue, obviously, funding, et cetera.
Yeah, I totally respect where you're coming from here. But your question, can we answer your question now? Or?
That would be great.
Okay, thanks.
And I'm sorry to take so long.
That's okay, but we do have a couple more questions to get through, and there's other people that want to ask.
Thank you, I'm a little bit at a disadvantage. My hearing aid, I don't know.
Totally respect where you're coming from. Thanks for the, thanks for the information. Any other want to comment towards that? Go ahead, Pete.
Just a comment in general. And I think the department and everybody in this room agrees that the most critical issue facing the Matsui Borough right now is habitat. And it's not just fish that generate, it's, like the gentleman said, the ecosystem. And if you were just to go back when I was growing up and compare what we have now, we've really done a lot of damage. And next week, what do we take up? The Borough is considering a setback reduction for our homes and projects built along waterways to reduce it. And that's, that's key. The impact to rearing habitat protected for salmon on it, we've seen what's happened on the Kenai River and other systems. It's critical. Go to the state of Washington if you want to really see it. So anyway, I agree, habitat's key.
Thanks, Pete. Any other comments? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name's Tom Adams. I'm the Matsui Borough Public Works Director. So while I could sit back here and just listen to your comments, I thought at least get up here to acknowledge. So while I could sit back here and just listen to your comments, I thought at least get up here to acknowledge some of the statements being made specifically with land use, albeit while some of the, you know, those issues that are coming forward, the assembly are, are dealing with planning, unnecessary public works. I did want to acknowledge the fact that Public Works, Matsue Borough, does have a pretty good partnership with Fish and Game, with Fish and Wildlife, and obtaining grants to put in culverts for fish passage across the borough. I'd say we're probably one of the more active and proactive governments across the state to do so. So we're always looking for opportunities to gain more grants and more funds and work with those agencies to, to implement those projects. We probably put several of those in per year and, and improve those, those systems, those crossings. You know, speaking to land use, you know, I'm also a 40-year resident, 40-plus-year resident of the Matsue Valley. I'm a licensed civil engineer. I've been designing roads in this borough for the past 30 years. I, I see the impacts of land use. And now in my position as director, I can see, you know, some of the absence of land controls and, and what that does for me, what problems it creates for us as, as a borough. But I, I know it's not an issue that's lost on other staff members as well, you know, for instance, you know, filling ecosystems, wetlands, you know, where they are jurisdictional wetlands, we have the Corps of Engineers to help protect this. Where they're non-JDE wetlands, the Matsue Borough has no regulations that allow us to control whether or not developers go fill those wetlands. And those, as you're well aware, have impacts from habitat to flood control. So those are all large problems. You know, there are things that the borough has tried to tackle in the past and for a variety of reasons have not got over the knob. There are still problems before us. And I can, I can just tell you that while I'm one director in the, in the midst of nine or 10 different departments, you know, those are challenges before us that as a borough, we need to, we need to kind of grow up and start taking on these challenges and, and try to address them so we can be responsible in the way we develop the Matsue Borough. So I just wanted to make sure that you understood that there's somebody back here listening to you and acknowledging some of the problems that we have.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate your coming up and speaking to us. Any other questions for Tom? Go ahead, Kendra.
Not for Tom, but speaking to the, the points that the question brought out originally, and I agree habitat is between the Borough and DNR and Fish and Game, getting everybody on the same page is a necessary nightmare. But on the, the third bullet about spawning and rearing environment degradation due to changing climate is one of the, the priorities that you see or one of the impacts you see, including warmer stream temperatures. Does Fish and Game have any kind of a, a map or a plan of areas that they think should be monitored, that they are monitoring? Or regardless of whether there's monitoring that they think are systems that should be looked at related to these stream temperatures or general rearing environment degradation?
I can answer that a little bit here, Kendra. I mean, and again, this goes through the, the Matsue Salmon Partnership. You know, there's three outfits working together, Fish and Game included, Cook Inlet Keeper and U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service that are monitoring and looking at mapping thermal imagery. For instance, on the Deschke River, they've already done it on the Big Lake System on the drainage and looking at areas of cold water, refugia, they're important for salmon passage or thought to be important for salmon passage and, and also salmon rearing. And gathering baseline data that might be useful in the future. These could be shown to be important habitats for salmon. We know that salmon do prefer, Pacific salmon prefer cold water temperatures, you know, around 15 or 16 degrees or so. And some of, some of the rivers that are low gradient throughout the state of Alaska and depending on how they're fed by their headwaters, they can be prone to warming during the summer months when salmon are ascending them and spawning. And then you have salmon that are constantly present in those river systems, rearing and then smolting out to go out to the ocean. So yeah, I mean, it's kind of a case by case, but we are doing work right here in the Matsue that it's exciting to be, to be part of that, even if indirectly.
Okay. Any other questions on that topic? I'm, I'm going to just say two words on that myself. I'd say that every time we have meetings monthly, except for the three months we're not here, we're always dealing with habitat issues in the Matsue Borough, whether it's wetlands ordinances, this new one setbacks with, with rivers and streams. You know, we, we, we've voiced our concerns about potentials. West is sitting at, at road access all the way up to Yantna. You know, all within the Matsue Borough, we have taken the time to make comments on that and recognize what habitat issues exist. It's very likely that Cook Inlet is the canary in the coal mine when it comes to Alaska because of our population growth between Anchorage and the Matsue will be the first ones to see our fisheries potentially go the way that Seattle and Washington did. My question has been when we're dealing with things that potentially are like, we're dealing with things that are habitat and how we can control it in the future. But as the world is increasingly getting more and more populated, it seems like not all of our problems are in river or, or inland anymore, especially when we start looking at the return of king salmon. And I think like last week I was at the Bristol Bay Finfish Meetings and they were talking about Chinook not returning. And if you can't claim that Chinook aren't returning to Bristol Bay because of habitat issues. And I'm just wondering at what point the feds combined with the state, if the state's in charge of salmon because it's inland, you know, we're dealing with this, with what's going on with Yoceta and the feds being involved in the North Pacific Fisheries Management Plan. It seems to me we're at a turning point right now where the feds really do need to get involved with understanding what's going on out in the ocean, whether it's genetics or the bycatch issue and related to genetics in, in river here. And where is the money going to come from for that eventually? Because there's, there's mixed stock fishing going out, on out in the, in the big ocean now. And it seems to me that we're at a turning point where we really need to understand what's being thrown overboard out there and how it relates to where it's supposed to be coming back to in the state of Alaska. Maybe that's through genetics, who knows? But then also we could get an understanding of abundance. Where are these fish going and supposed to be coming back to? So even though we do the best we can here in the Matsue Borough to try to keep these rivers and streams and whatnot from getting bulldozed and putting culverts in after the fact, I'm curious if there's any way that we can start working with the feds to understand what's going on in the big ocean, why our kings are not coming back here. Sorry. Sorry, Forrest, and then we'll get to you, I think, Jessica.
Yeah, that's a great question and statement of concerns that many of us share, Mike. And I just wanted to point out a few initiatives and projects that are underway that you might not be aware of. First, the department has a new salmon ocean ecology program. So we have a couple of really talented scientists that are part of that. And they're specifically looking at marine survival and marine ecology of Pacific salmon in the North Pacific and then in the Bering Sea. We're collaborating with Russia, Canada, and National Marine Fisheries Service on the International Year of the Salmon Program. That's, it's a North Pacific Anadris Fish Commission initiative. And it's one of the largest undertakings to look at salmon distribution and life history and ecology on the high seas. It was a little bit disrupted by our relationship with, with Russia. But we, ADF and G scientists have participated in those high seas surveys. There's, there's already been some papers that have started to come out of that. And so I'd encourage you to look at North Pacific Anadris Fish Commission website for, for some results there that are, that have already been released and will be forthcoming. And we've identified salmon ocean ecology as a, as a budget priority for the department. And that's reflected in this salmon ocean ecology program that we've initiated. So yeah, we, we share those concerns. We've done, we've been looking at early marine survival in the Bering Sea, Yukon, Chinook. And then we've had a long-term project in Southeast Alaska that, where we're tagging, coated wire tagging wild Chinook smolt. And that, that enables us to estimate marine survival. And we're doing that in four rivers in Southeast. So we share those concerns and are looking at ways to, to investigate some of those questions.
Thank you. I had no idea that any of that was really going on, Forrest. I appreciate that. And I'll probably follow up with you to, to know how to look those things up so I can pay more attention. Somebody else had a question?
No, this is Jerry. I, I had a comment. And actually haven't, I'm trying to work from home, so it's kind of difficult. But S3429 has been introduced. It is the Alaska Salmon Research Task Force Act. You can visit Murkowski or Sullivan's website to look into it more. Or I could get information and send it to Ted. I just want you to let you know that it has been introduced in the Senate.
Thanks so much. Would you please give us your name again? I'm sorry, I missed that.
This is Jerry with Senator Murkowski's office.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
And Mr. Chair, to, through the chair to Jerry, yes, I would, please send me that information. I'll distribute it to the Fish and Wildlife Commission members. Thank you.
Yeah, and especially if you would, a note saying pretty much what you just said, like what, what I just missed there. You, you mentioned introducing something and I'd love to know what that is. I'll definitely follow up with you and, and Forrest to understand better.
Yeah. That was the Senate Bill 3429. It's called the Alaska Salmon Research Task Force Act. It's being led by Senator Sullivan.
Awesome. Thank you so much for being here tonight to give us that info. All right. Question five, Larry, do you mind reading that?
Question five. What are both sport and commercial divisions' unfunded research and management priorities for upper Cook Inlet salmon during immediate future?
I can take off with that one and then letting Colton finish that one up maybe. Cause some of these are sport and some of them are commercial. The, the one that's specific to the Yantna that we started this past year is actually funded. So it didn't exactly follow your instructions on the question, but it is a very important project that we've kind of introduced and we'd like that to keep going. It's our main research project and we're trying to bolster our, our modeling, make it a little more robust by collecting more information on Chinook salmon of the, of the Yantna drainage. So we are starting to run a sonar on Lower Lake Creek. And we're putting out radio tags and collecting biological data on Chinook salmon as they pass through fish wheels on the lower Yantna. So we kind of have a mark recapture going there as well. And so, yeah, we hope to run that one and keep that one going. Otherwise sport fish, you know, we have had some projects cut back. Our Jim Creek Coho project was completely cut and we, you know, the commission was, was helpful in helping to start that project from, from its startup in 2015. So that's one that we'd really like to get back if we could. And, and also obviously Deschka Coho is a big one for us. We have an escapement goal on the Deschka River. And we're, we're running it for as long as we can because Deschka is an indicator of, of Coho run strength back to the Susitna. We've got Little Sioux, which is our big one for Kneecock Arm. And but, but Deschka is an important one. And so that one would probably cost the least amount to get back up and running because we already have a Chinook weir in place on the Deschka River. So it's just a matter of running that weir for another month, basically from mid-August to mid-September. So yeah, that's, I'll turn it over to the commercial fisheries.
Yeah, thanks, Sam. So for commercial fisheries priorities, a lot of this is going to be actually echoing what Forrest was describing earlier with our Susitna River Sauk Eye estimation ability. So restoration of the genetic stock ID mark recapture for the Yantna River Sauk Eye in conjunction with the weirs. And this includes bringing back online Chilatna and then collecting these samples below the confluence of the Yantna with the end goal of being able to create annual Susitna drainage wide total run estimates with a higher degree of certainty. That was pretty abbreviated, but yeah.
That's, that's probably just fine. Thank you. Pete has a question.
Yes, Colton or Forrest. GSI projects can be very expensive. What, what are you looking at on those two? You got the restoration of GSI mark recapture? And then you've got GSI samples below the Yantna.
Yeah, so those essentially can be done at the same time, same sort of project that the, we can use the information gathered from the genetics to conduct the mark recapture. And the location at which we collect those, so as long as they're below the confluence of the Yantna, we can then use that to calculate the total run.
So Colton, what would be a cost if you're tagging that onto your existing fish wheels? Are you looking at something substantial or, or what?
Yes. What I had seen as far as cost estimations was somewhere in the $200,000 to $300,000 range.
Thank you.
Thanks, Colton. Larry has a question.
One of the issues that comes before this commission almost continuously is from the public is why is our assessment of escapements declining rather than improving during these difficult times that we're facing with some of these stocks? And it's an issue that we have seen here in the Susitna. We once had a sonar counter that was counting fish presumably for the entire Susitna drainage, much like they have on the Kenai and the Casilo. That system was altered to only count in the Yantna for many, many years. And then suddenly the department discovered or felt that there was not an accurate way to count fish. So then we got escapement weirs and particularly in for Sauk Eye and three locations, Judd, Larson, Chilatna Lake. And we formerly had it before that at Fish Creek. So we had four places to count Sauk Eye. The same issue is kind of true of Coho too. We had four weir locations to count Coho. Now, over the years, we've seen these weir projects eliminated because of funding presumably. And this is a, everybody recognizes that it didn't have to do with fisheries, that escapement assessment is the keystone to sustainable fisheries management. And yet we're, our program is weakening up here. So this has become a, a top priority with our commission to see what we can do to restore at least, if not increase our abilities to accurately assess escapement. So one thing that would be useful for us, I believe, would be these different issues that you've, escapement related issues that you have here. If you could provide us a budget request, if you will. What are these things costing? What, what, what it costs to have them put in place, weir projects? And, and we might be able to work with our legislator to, to see that. Uh, and, and we might be able to work with our legislator to, to see that some funding is provided for this, some of these projects. Uh, we've had some success in the past in that regard. Uh, a few years back, we got over $2 million. That was directed right to the borough to decide how they use this. Uh, and half of that money was used, our recognition, we just were talking about the importance of habitat, installing good culverts. So I guess what we'd like to see is some specifics relative to these escapement projects, uh, and see what we might be able to do to see, help you get some of these programs restored. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Larry. You know, that's a, um, I saw, any response to that from Larry?
Mike, I could just say, I, I know I provided some, some weird budget numbers to you in the past, um, earlier, possibly this fall, but I'm gonna, I'll look through that again and, and, uh, make sure those are up to snuff, you know, correct? And then, and then pass those to Ted.
That'd be great. I, I think we'll continue to follow up on that because we have, we have made an issue out of, of wanting to keep these weirs, have them in, have more of them and keep, or at least reestablish them back to where they had been prior to a few years ago, and now keep them in longer to see what's happening as, as fish are potentially coming in later. And, um, and maybe we could be helpful to the commission to do that. Um, I see there's a hand up. Is there someone out there with a question? And I see, uh, also Andy does too, but let me get to that other hand first.
Oh, yeah, this is Mark with the Native Village of McLutna and for Forrest and ADFG. If our tribe can be, uh, of any help with, um, Jim Creek projects, uh, we, we'd be interested to wo- work with you to do that. Um, you know, it's a culturally important, um, salmon area for, for people. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Andy.
Hey, that, that, uh, uh, request that they could help from McLutna tribe is, 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 is very, could be very important, uh, possibly funding the Jim Creek weir. And also, as we heard about earlier, um, there's a trail that crosses, uh, the headwaters of Jim Creek that, that drop into Leaf Lake, which is a very, uh, uh, important spawning area and, 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 uh, if the department and the tribe looked at, could we get some funding to, uh, uh, provide a, a, a better route across that trail? And possibly get some funding to a weir. I think that would be good. Um, the, the other comment I was wanting to make was, uh, uh, we had Sam, uh, uh, say he'd get us some funding figures on, uh, the sport fish projects, uh, the weir projects, and could we, could we get from, uh, commercial fish, uh, uh, an agreement to provide us for some costs on what Chalatna Lake project would cost, the weir project. Thank you.
Okay, Andy, thank you. Um, any other questions for, on, uh, question five? Yeah, we got 10 minutes to go and we got two questions left. And so, uh, let's move on to question six and, um, let me see, um, let me see, who would like to read that one? Anyone out there? On, I'll do it. Okay, six. "The 2023-24 Board of Fish meeting schedule included lower and upper Cook Inlet and Kodiak waters. What proposals does the department plan to submit which may affect salmon migrating to the Matsu waters? Of significant interest would be the proposals addressing, addressing the management of the commercial fisheries in Upper Cook Inlet." Colton, would you like to take a stab at that one? Because we're not, I'm gonna, I'm not even looking at Forrest yet.
Yeah, so at this point, we don't have any department, um, generated proposals that we're discussing that would affect, uh, the Matsu waters. Um, we are coming into that part of the season though in preparation for the next Upper Cook Inlet Board of Fish meeting for this group. Uh, there are some important dates there to just kind of keep in mind that the proposal submission deadline is going to be coming up this April. Um, I'm not sure that the call for proposals has come out yet, but if not yet, it should be very soon. Um, and so even on that front, I'm sure that Sam and Samantha and all the other department employees, you know, were available to help with writing proposals and regulation questions. So, feel free to reach out. Uh, for those who, um, didn't before, I am sitting at Brian's desk now, formerly Brian's desk. So, that same phone number, you can reach out to me or I'll post my email in the chat here also so that I can be available to assist with those.
Okay. Thank you. Is that, does that answer it all? Okay.
You know, Mike, you mentioned earlier that, um, this is sitting a stock of yield concern for Sockeye salmon was, um, was lifted during the last board meeting and, you know, there were some commitments made during that discussion that we would continue to manage, Susitna Sockeye to meet escapement goals. And so that, that hasn't changed, you know, um, that's, we, we don't want to get back into a stock of concern situation again. So, just wanted to reassure you of that and, you know, just a little bit, you know, and when the department's developing proposals for these meetings, as you're aware, for Upper Cook Inlet, many of the proposals that the board considers are highly allocative. And so, you know, the department isn't submitting proposals that are dealing with allocation. We typically develop our proposals around areas in the regulations where we see ambiguity, um, that have created problems for us and management. You know, how do we interpret the board's intent? So we try to get clarity on that or, um, you know, areas where we think maybe, you know, regulations are conflicting, we try to get clarity there. Um, at past Upper Cook Inlet board cycles, um, we had proposals on, say, Kenai Sockeye escapement goals because we saw some conflicting language in the way the goals were. So, you know, in some cases, escapement goals would be specified in regulation. We review the goals on a three-year cycle. So if a goal changes, then that number has to be changed in regulation. Those are the kind of things that you see from the department, not, um, things that would change, um, harvest opportunity among user groups. So, I don't know if that helps with some of our internal process. Thanks.
Cool. Any other, any other questions on that? I can't help but ask one, um, myself, because I, we were provided the Kodiak, um, end of season summary, and I know some of the management changes that happened in that last Board of Fish or prior to the last Board of Fish meetings two years ago also involved Kodiak management that changed a few things. One thing that looked interesting to me was that the, in, out of the KMA salmon season summary for Kodiak, they caught 11,409 kings. And that they didn't even meet escapement, which is around 5,000 kings. Um, I, I'm losing track of my notes here. In, in, uh, final escapement in the Deska was 5,436 fish. And then there was one other area down south, uh, that's also didn't meet their escapement. And all total, there's, the escapement they were trying to make didn't even come close to the 11,000 kings that got caught in that area. Given the fact that fisheries now are getting pretty shut down, be, like the East Side Settinate Fishery, uh, the Susitna River, uh, commercial fishery for kings, um, this week, now down Bristol Bay, things could be happening. Are, are people looking at those numbers of 11,000, you know, in, you know, what's happening in Kodiak and thinking about potentially changing the, the timing of openers to reduce the king salmon harvest or just, I wonder if, if in the process of beginning to think about generating plans, if, again, I couldn't help but think that, and not to pick on Kodiak, but if you had an idea of what those fish or where those fish that were being caught in Kodiak, where they were going back to, that could really help us maybe with some management and, and some abundance issues. Not just to shut down a whole fishery for that sake, but go ahead, Forrest.
Sure, um, so, just a little background. I mean, the Kodiak Management Area Fishery, it, it's primarily a pink salmon fishery. I mean, there, there are Sockeye, well, runs, you know, all five species of salmon spawn in the Kodiak Management Area, but the fishery is primarily a pink salmon fishery. Um, we have sampled, and there are no directed commercial Chinook salmon fisheries in the Kodiak Management Area. We have sampled, um, portions of the KMA for, uh, genetic stock identification, portions of the, of the KMA commercial harvest. We've sampled the Marine Sport Fishery for GSI and there's, um, a groundfish fishery that occurs around Kodiak Island, uh, using trawl gear and their, uh, bycatch of sam- Chinook salmon has been sampled for GSI. So there's a, there's been ongoing efforts to look at the stock composition of Chinook in waters around the KMA. And the results vary between those fisheries, but in general, somewhere around 70 to 80% of the Chinook that are caught in marine waters of Kodiak are of non-Alaska origin. It varies, but that's kind of a ballpark. Um, so when you look at that, you know, 11,000 Chinook, which is about the five-year average, it's roughly the five-year average. Keep in mind that likely less than half of those are of Alaska origin. Um, as you, some of the Kodiak Management Area Fisheries occur in close proximity to the large Chinook runs on Kodiak, Karlek River and Ia Kulik. And the harvest in those areas is going to be comprised of more local fish. I, off the top of my head, I want to say that I think in the commercial fishery, maybe 7% of those are Cook Inlet origin. I'd have to look on that, but that, that's the number that's kind of sticks in my head. So less than 10% of those are Cook Inlet origin. So these distant water fisheries that are encountering fish from across the North Pacific, when you look at their impact on any given stock, you know, it's, it's likely low. Um, you know, your impact on a, on a stock is going to be greater with a fishery that occurs closer to that stream of origin than it is in a distant water fishery.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
That's it. Let's get to six. We're almost, we're pretty much out of time here. We're at 7:02. So, um, last question. Do you want to read that, Kendra?
Thanks, Mike. With fish returning later, later every year, what can the department do to keep weirs in longer and extend the OTF for at least one more week and focus on Coho?
Yeah, thanks, Kendra. I can start this one out here. Um, talk about Coho salmon run timing is super variable, about the most variable species of salmon that we have. We have had some late entries into Cook Inlet on a, on a few years. 2017 was one of those years. I believe 2020 might have been another one. 2017 was fairly drastic and they didn't even show up into Cook Inlet for the first three weeks that we would have expected to see them. So, um, so sometimes they can come in a little bit late. Generally, our weir projects are, our, our main ones are, are in place by the time we'd expect to see them, but, um, still, you know, pulling the weirs mid-September is, is appropriate as far as when I look back and, and, and look at the most recent runs we've been seeing, you know, and because salmon are, are, they're still maturing and spawning at the same time. One thing you may have noticed though is that we've pulled out the Deska and Little Sioux even earlier than we normally would, um, with technicians going on leave mid-September. And two years ago, we had to do that because we were trying to get ahead of a, a big flood that was coming in and our counts had wound down and we decided to make a move. So, the, I realized the, the, you know, the appearance was that we pulled those out early and we did. Last year, we just were inundated with floodwater. So, it really, um, that's pretty much what pulled our weirs for us, were, were the high waters. Had we not had those in, we would have run Deska until probably August 10th or 11th so that we can pull it and have people off the books by the 15th, and that's a budget reduction. We realized that. And Little Sioux, you know, we're usually looking to be out of the water around the 10th or so of September. So, um, that's probably still a good timeframe for that, for that weir. If we, if we operate the Coho weir on Fish Creek, which is also cut, um, we haven't run that one for a few years. That one does have a later run timing historically. So we generally keep staff on almost through the whole month of September, um, as well as for Jim Creek, if, if, when we run that one.
Thanks, Sam. Any additions to that?
Yeah, I can address that last portion regarding OTF.
Go ahead, Colton.
So, um, the extension of the OTF would be, at this point, it's funding limited. And then also, uh, the vessel that conducts the surveys also has obligations after OTF. As it is now, uh, that project does accomplish our main priorities with providing the index in season for that primary commercial fishing season. That's all on that one.
All right. Thank you. Anybody want to make any more comments on that or? Would the, would the OTF be helpful? I mean, if, if that was something for, for Cohos in particular in the, up here? I guess I'd ask Sam or Sam.
Sure, Mike. We do use, there, there is a model. We have, the OTF has run for a long, I don't know how many years, but, um, Colton or Forrest might know, but there's a lot of data, you know, and it, and I believe it's always run through pretty much the end of July. And so, you know, we can keep track of our final weir counts for Coho salmon through all those data points that we have. Somewhere along the line, someone like Bob DeChino or Mark Welllett came up with a, a model based on the OTF. And there are some thresholds that by certain dates, if you reach this threshold, it predicted a strong probability that either the Deska or the Little Sioux Coho goal would be, would be met. And so, um, that has some utility to tell us if we meet that threshold, that we're likely to achieve the goal. If, if we don't meet the thresholds, it doesn't mean that we're going to miss the goal. So it has, it's limited. It's an indices and we do use it for early in the season because it's really about all we have until weir counts get a little bit further into the season and can, and where we can trust them a little bit better to give us an accurate, you know, run projection, you know, as assessment of run strength. Generally, that happens about after the first week of August. And then from then on, it, it just firms up as the season goes.
Okay. Thank you, Sam. Yeah, there's two hands up. I'm gonna, uh, go, I actually didn't see who's was first, but we'll go with Andy and then the next one.
Yeah, just real brief, you know, and, and I'm getting off the subject a little bit. I apologize. But, uh, I heard that the, uh, Larson Creek Sockeye weir project was cut short this year as well. Is that correct? And if so, what was the pull-out date?
Colton, can you answer that one or?
Off the top of my head, uh, no.
Okay.
I was with sport fish at the time. So my apologies there. Um, but I can get that information back unless one of the Sams has that on top of their mind.
Go ahead, Sam.
Yeah, I was just looking at those counts today, actually. Um, my feeling was that it ran the season to the, um, usually when, um, commercial fisheries pull a weir, it's down to the last 2%. You know, if counts get down to only 2%, of the season, then they're pulling the weir out of the water. So, um, I think that's what happened this year. Otherwise, I'm not aware that it was, if it was pulled early, but I don't think it was.
Okay, Paul Warda, is that you with a question?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Excellent. So I had a question with that last, um, question with the, in the public comment, the department said there hadn't been a noticeable deep, uh, delay in run timing. I was looking at the numbers on the Little Sioux run, um, the weir counts in particular. And in the past six years, um, every year except 2008 has been well below the, um, 10-year average on August 1st and August 6th. Um, and although, I don't know if the percentage wise, the one has shifted later, there's definitely been far fewer fish available in the river early than other years.
Yeah, thanks, Paul. Uh, Mike, uh, through the chair, Mike?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Um, yeah, no, I, I think your observations are, are correct for some of those years. Um, that, that's what I was talking about before. Some, sometimes we do see a later entry. It doesn't mean that the run is going to be late overall. A lot of times by the, the time we meet up with the historical midpoint, we get back on track. Sometimes a run is more truncated, but sometimes it's really spread out. Um, but Coho can be really all over the board. Um, they really can.
Okay, thanks, Sam. Any more questions on this one? Okay, if hearing none, that was, that was the end of the questions. Sorry. So apologies for running over. I think I've done most of the talking, so my fault. Okay, um, let's see, next meeting. So can we go into that, Ted? Our next meeting is next? Oh, go ahead, Larry.
Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to thank the department for spending this evening with it. It's been very informative. It's helped us and the public better understand some of the issues associated with our fisheries up in this area. And I thought the season summaries for Kodiak, Lower Cook Inlet, Northern Cook Inlet, and Northern Sport Fisheries were excellent, very good source of information, uh, that we'll be able to use from time to time down the line, some of the escapement information and escapement, uh, levels. Anyhow, it was, I think it's a very productive evening, and I thank you folks for, uh, helping us in this regard. And any of the people online that do not have these season summaries, uh, they are on, uh, the Borough website. If you look at Matzoo Borough and then look for the Fish and Wildlife Commission, you'll see, uh, this material. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Larry. Any other members of the commission like to make a comment? Go ahead, Pete.
Thanks, Mike. And I echo Larry's comments and thank the state for great summaries. And, uh, Colton, I want to wish you the best, taking a new role as a comfish management biologist. And tough area, but, uh, I think you do very well there. So good luck on that. And, uh, Forrest, it's great to get, see you again. Thank you.
Kendra?
Mr. Chair.
Uh, go ahead. Who's that? Colton? Oh, Tim, go ahead, Tim.
It's Tim Hale. Hey, yeah, I just wanted to say, uh, thank you to the Fish and Game folks, and thank you to all the public that came out and, and, uh, asked questions and expressed opinions and stuff. And a lot of good information here today, and I was really glad to be able to attend. So, uh, thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Tim. Okay, Kendra?
Yeah, of course, I'll echo that. Thank you very much for all the work that Fish and Game did to put this together. Uh, and I want to thank both the public and Fish and Game for their interest and concern in habitat. And I hope we can work together going forward to continue to make things better in that direction.
Thank you. Howard, would you like to say something?
Yeah, well, I was going to echo everybody's comments about thanking the department for coming out and meeting with us again and, and giving us some good explanations and good information. And, uh, yeah, it's nice to see Forrest again. And I would echo Pete's comment about good luck to Colton. Um, I didn't realize that Brian had retired until only a few weeks ago. So that was kind of a surprise to me. And, uh, Pete was exactly right. That is a very difficult management area. So just grow a thick skin, Colton. That's all I can tell you. And to everybody else, um, I want to wish you, being politically uncorrect, I'm going to wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And, um, commission members, hopefully I'll see you next week. So everybody have a good evening.
Thank you, Howard. Andy?
Um, yes, I, I, uh, also would like to thank the department for a good discussion. I would like to thank the members of the public. I would like to thank the tribes for showing up and participating, uh, in, in this meeting, uh, McLutna, Connect, I believe we had a person here from Connect, and, um, Chickaloon. And, uh, we don't have that all, all that often. And, um, certainly would like to work together, uh, with you guys as, as much as we can. And, and, and for the public, it's good to hear your concerns. It helps to, uh, get us going in the right direction. And as far as maintaining or restoring, uh, Matzoo salmon runs, it's going to take all of us to get that done. So I thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Andy. Ted?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a comment. I have to go to a window though. It's not a speech. Uh, I, I want to, uh, thank the commission and the department for an excellent meeting. And I think these have gone really well. And it's a great service to the citizens of the Matzoo Borough. And I do want to recognize my colleagues, uh, that helped set up this meeting. So Caleb over there, uh, I really appreciate you spending this winter night making sure our technology works. And then Maya in the planning division is kind of my right-hand person, gave me a road report before I drove in from Anchorage this morning, or this afternoon, I should say. So, um, there's a lot of people that work behind the scenes to support your Fish and Wildlife Commission, and I am, appreciate working with them. And the final thing I want to mention is, I heard about, I think Larry posted this question about what can you do about weers and weir funding and these priorities? And I do want, uh, the members of the public to realize that the, uh, there's a special meeting, January 5th at 10:00 AM in the morning. And this is, um, a meeting between the Matzoo Borough Assembly and the Matzoo State Legislature delegation. It's going to be at the Legislative Information Office, uh, in Wasilla, but the Matzoo Borough is going to be talking with our state legislators in the Matzoo about our priorities as a borough. And there are some fisheries priorities there. So again, I think, uh, most of our elected officials and volunteer board members really appreciate and need your input on what's important to you. Uh, so if you care about fisheries and weers, uh, or any other issue, that is an excellent meeting to go to or to participate in. And again, just go, just Google Matzoo Borough Assembly, go to 2023, it's January 5th, 10:00 AM, uh, at the legislate, information office in Wasilla. Thank you, Mr. Chair. You're, you're doing a good job.
Thanks, Ted. Skin of my teeth. Uh, I just would like to echo pretty much what everybody has said here, but my gratitude towards, um, this commission, the fact that people show up here when they do so often throughout the year and provide their input, historical and modern is, is incredible. And that likewise with the department, both, uh, comfish and sport fish, it's, it's pretty great. I feel like, um, we all try to work together really hard to, and then most importantly, the public to hear what they have to say and how they're impacted and try to help out. Um, and every year, this, this, hopefully we nick it a little bit more off, a few more chips land on the ground and we start to see something happen here. Um, but I really appreciate this, uh, every year, the work that the department puts into it. And, um, so, yeah, thank you. And hopefully our questions aren't redundant and we keep going to new places. So, yeah, I just, I really appreciate that. Um, that being said, um, can we have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Hearing any objections? I'm going to drive back to Tell Kietna now. Thank you, everyone, for turning out tonight. Appreciate it.